So, to repeat, good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. Go call, please.
Mr. Cooney?
Here.
Dr. Corleone?
Here.
Mr. Grau?
Here.
Dr. Kane?
Here.
Mr. Mazikara? Mr. Morello?
Here.
Ms. Novy?
Here.
Mr. Palma? Mrs. Richel?
Here.
Shannon, your Karen?
Here.
And Zion, your Kat. Farmber?
Thank you, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands as one nation, united in its soul, with every dignity and justice.
Jim, please read the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law Statement.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law is enacted to ensure the right of the public, through an advance notice, to attend the meetings of public bodies of which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Ascom Berkeley Township Board of Education approved this meeting date. Notice of the meeting has been posted at the municipal building, all Berkeley public schools, all Berkeley public libraries, all Berkeley Township Board of Education administrative office building, all Berkeley public school website, and advertised in the Delaware.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening, Shannon, we'll take your high school report.
Okay, so on the sports front, the winter sports are actually just starting off most of the seasons, like the tryouts began yesterday. But the boys varsity hockey team actually started the season off on Saturday, November 30th, with a 9-3 win against Jefferson at Madden Arena. Yeah. Senior Tyler Lenson signed his national letter of intent on November 20th to play collegiate baseball at Bloomsburg University. On the clubs front, on November 24th, SAC and the School of Rock held a concert at M.T.A.'s auditorium. Part of the proceeds raised were donated to help support Mr. Kielik's son. The School of Rock also held a concert that morning in the school auditorium, which was very successful as well. Key Club's annual Thanksgiving food drive ran from November 18th through the 22nd. This year's collection was the most successful drive yet, and over 4,000 cans and other non-perishable food items were collected for the Motley Food pantry. The homeroom that brought in the most cans actually brought in over 600 cans. And SAC donated $250 to the grade with the most participation, which was our senior class. And on November 23rd, forensics traveled to Randolph where the team won first place in speech. The school, Motley Pantry High School, held their second college fair on Thursday, November 21st, where seniors and juniors had the opportunity to meet with representatives from different universities and schools, which was very helpful. And as for upcoming events, the high school's annual winter concert will be next week on Tuesday, December 10th, with the school's orchestra, band, and choir performing. And very far in the future, but SAC and the student council, each grade will be hosting a student activity basketball game, which will be on February 28th. Yeah, thanks very much.
Awesome, nice.
Thank you so much. I had the pleasure, and Mike did too, of attending the School of Rock concert. And I was floored. It was like a truly professional concert. The talent in our high school is unbelievable. And Mr. Seas' enthusiasm and commitment to that program is just... it was wonderful. I was thinking about how many great outlets and avenues our students have to express themselves. And it was really wonderful. I was really happy I went. Thank you. Good night. Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Shannon. Good evening, everyone. Hope you're doing well, hope you had a wonderful Thanksgiving. I have two things to mention tonight. The first one is connected to Lazar and the playing fields behind Lazar and the power lines that are presently being constructed behind Lazar. So let me start with the actual field relocation. Board of Education has been concerned about what the effects of the new power lines might have. And this has been a concern there as over many, many years. And through a settlement with, or a, I guess I'll call it a settlement, it's probably a better word for it, but with the power company, has an award which will allow us to relocate the two fields that are behind Lazar. One is a baseball field and one is a softball field. The board attempted to work closely with the township to potentially relocate those playing fields across the street from Lazar, where the community park has its fields. But that did not work out. We will still be able to hold our physical education classes on the township property across the street, as well as any recess activities, so that's very convenient for us. But we would not be able to relocate either our baseball or softball field there. Paul Pimatello then came to me, as we were considering various options and properties around the community, with an idea to, in fact, reconfigure to some extent the actual property at the high school. And he was very sure that we could, in fact, create a full-size girls varsity or JV softball field on our property, as well as potentially do some other things that would label us to not only increase the number of fields, the quality of our fields, but to have it right on our property, very convenient for our high school students. So Jim Tevis, our business administrator, has now gone ahead with a request for proposals that has now gone out to look for a design firm that would be able to help us look at our property and bring this concept to fruition. And so we have a fairly aggressive timetable in place to go out with that RFP and to solicit interest from different design firms to go through the interview process required, and eventually, for the Board of Education, after the interviews are completed, to appoint a firm and then move forward. If the dollars and the design all fit together, we would hope to break ground after the girls softball and boys baseball season. And our dream configuration, so to speak, would be to, in fact, turf the boys' baseball field and have that turf run across the entire property from left to right if you're on the exit road looking at the outfield or looking toward the infield of the boys' varsity field. So have that turf run across the entire expanse of the property. And the boys' varsity baseball field be turfed. We would be creating a new girls' varsity softball field, which would also be turfed, so we'd have two girls' softball fields on the property, with the backstops adjacent to one another. And then, right behind the boys' varsity field, create a boys' practice baseball infield. Couldn't fit in a full-size baseball field, a practicing field, so... And then the last piece of that is the expanse that runs across the outfield of the boys' varsity field, which is parallel to the exit road of the high school. We could fit another full-size, called a multipurpose field, soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, all of those uses within that outfield area. Also turfed, across that entire turf outfield. So we'd be, in fact, if our dream configuration should happen with the dollars that come from the settlement, we would be able to have a turf-boys varsity baseball field, spell the dirt JV baseball field, a boys' practice infield, so that three teams could, in fact, share the two large fields and have an extra practice infield. That would be our varsity, JV, and freshman teams, and two full-size girls' softball fields, as well as the multipurpose field. If the dollars don't match, then the board has other decisions to make. And I guess with the RFP, we'll be looking, the design firm will be looking at potential lesser, less ambitious models. So that's that piece of it. The second piece is the power lines. We don't have any conclusive information about when they're supposed to go live, but we have some unofficial information. The unofficial news is that the 230-volt side of the power line, which is really what is out there now, that's what was going through, that was the current that was going through them now, or previously, 230 kilovolts. The 230-kilovolt side, we believe, is due to go live at the end of December, so in a very short time. We don't know if that will actually happen, but we've heard some reports about that. And then, on April 1st, the 500-kilovolt side is supposed to go live, potentially will go live. So in order to take every precaution possible in tonight's agenda, there is an item to hire a, what do we call the kind of firm?
Consulting EMF.
An EMF?
Environment consulting firm, to measure the EMFs that come from that power source. And so we are going to take three readings. One, almost immediately, because there's no power on back there at all. So we will take readings in various locations outdoors, as well as various locations inside Lazar. So that's with no power. Then we will take a second reading, once the 230-kilovolt power comes on in the same locations, outside and inside, so we can measure differences. And then finally, when the 500-kilovolt power comes on, take a third reading, both inside and outside. So that's what we're up to with regard to relocation of the field and the power lines. Any questions?
Assistant's report?
Okay. The only other item I have very quickly is that tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM at Motley Township High School Cafeteria, we're holding a town meeting. As you're aware, we've held town meetings in the past around specific subjects, like homework, around other items like...
Class.
Class, right, thank you. And this meeting, though, is a little bit different in that there is no specific topic. Now, we may have some specific topics later on as the school progresses, but I did tell the board last year that I was interested in trying a couple where perhaps there was no specific topic, but it was just an open-ended conversation. I've invited faculty, administration, the community, or board. Certainly, anyone is welcome to attend. Any topic is up for grabs. I can't promise I'll have answers or reactions to anything that's brought up, but I'm always willing to listen. And it gives me some perspective about what people are thinking about and interested in, and those conversations may lead us toward other meetings around particular topics. So our parent organizations have been nice enough to advertise several times for us, and I appreciate that. So we hope we'll have a nice audience tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM.
At 7:00?
7:00 PM at the high school cafeteria.
Cafeteria or what?
Cafeteria.
Was it 7:30? 7:30. Thank you, Terry.
In the high school cafeteria.
I'll be there at 7:00.
High school cafeteria, 7:30.
I just want to say that I really hope people come, because it affords them a unique opportunity to speak to you and to get things that we wouldn't normally know are on their minds out in the open. So I really, I urge people to come.
Okay.
Okay, Jim, business administrator's report?
Yes, my only report this evening is regarding the recent audit for the 2012-2013 school year. Our order is actually present with this this evening, Mr. Rob Hay, Lieutenant Higgins, and give us a quick presentation.
Thank you, Jim, good evening, all.
You can sit if you want.
That's fine.
You can sit if you want.
That's fine.
It's a pretty short report.
As Jim said, this is, I'm just giving you a brief summary of the recently filed annual order report, which is required by the state of New Jersey on an annual basis. This covers your 2012-13 fiscal year. The order report actually has three, what we call order opinions in it. One is your independent orders report, which is on your financial statements. Another one is on what they call government auditing standards. That's a order opinion on your internal controls or your financial reporting in accordance with government auditing standards. And the third one is what we call your single order on your state and federal grant programs. And I'm very happy to report that in all three of your order opinions the district received what we call an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of opinion and order we give. It's basically a clean opinion, means your financial statements were all prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We found no issues of internal control problems, and you were complying with all of your state and federal grant programs. So that's a very good accomplishment for the year. Just to talk about fund balance a little bit. The district ended the year with about 3.1 million in what we call surplus, unassigned fund balance. The state limits the amount you can have as surplus each year to your commonly called your 2% limit, with some exceptions. And that number is about 2.1 million. So obviously, at about 3.1 million in total, the state allows you to keep the 2.1 million to the end of the year with about a million, what they call excess surplus. That amount is required to be given back for tax relief in your next budget cycle, which would be your 2014-15 budget cycle. That number's pretty similar to last year, so I think going into the next year's budget, dollar for dollar, you should be pretty even starting off. On top of that surplus number, you also have a pretty healthy reserve. The state allows you to reserve some money for specific purposes. You have 7 million capital reserve for future years. That's unassigned capital reserve that can be used at any time by board resolution, which are on from that account, and used for any capital needs the district may have in their long-range facilities plan. You also have about 665,000 in what they call maintenance reserve. That's to be used for your upkeep of your buildings. Can't be used for capital improvements, but it can be used for the maintenance of your existing facilities. As far as recommendations in the order report, we have three minor recommendations in there, what we call general comments. There's three levels of comments and recommendations in order to have. One is a general comment, which all three of your recommendations are. Another one is a significant efficiency, and the highest one is a material weakness. You have no significant efficiencies or material weaknesses. These three recommendations here are really just general comments, easily correctable, and I would think your corrective action plan is in process, and probably these three won't be in next year's audit. And of these three, none of them are repeats from the previous year. So any comments and recommendations we had the previous year, those were all cleaned up for 2012-13. So all in all, very good audit report. Financially, the district is very healthy. And recommendation-wise, I think it speaks for itself with the three minor recommendations in there. And Jim can attest, we do a pretty thorough audit and define those three minor recommendations.
That you do.
That's a very, very good accomplishment.
So an excellent audit report?
It's an excellent, excellent audit report, yes. Very, district pretty bright.
I just want to take a quick moment to just real quick thank Barbara State and the Assistant Business Administrator. We're working very closely with the auditing firm every year this year, so it's no exception.
We're very easy time, aren't we, during the audit? We ask for a lot of stuff, and it's always given to us pretty quickly. And any questions, we have our answer.
And I think the board would like to thank you, Jim, and your office for an excellent audit report.
Definitely a team effort.
You better put that in minutes.
Yes, no, that in minutes. Charlie?
Yeah, we had an exit conference on November 13th, and we committee reviewed all of this. And I think at that time, one of you indicated of all the districts you do, that this was probably one of the better, if not the best district in terms of efficiencies, operation, et cetera. Is that true?
Yeah, that's true. I mean, I do about seven or eight myself, varying sizes, some bigger, some smaller. And I think for your size district, and even in all size district, I think the audit speaks for itself with those minor recommendations and the health of your financial statements. So you're certainly at the top of the list, as far as my audits, anyway.
I think that, given your diligence on the board, this is without a doubt the best audit. And I compliment the business office staff, and actually Jim and his assistant Barbara. It couldn't be done with a lot of effort, a lot of hard work. Sometimes business administrators are not always the most popular people in a school district. But I think this all is indicative of the leadership we have in that office. And I personally like to thank you, Mr. Tevis, and your staff who gave that on behalf of me, and I think I'm speaking for the whole board when I say that, for a job well done. And next year, it's going to be tough to beat that audit report, but I'm sure that every effort will need to do that. But again, thank you for the wonderful effort you've made for the last fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Grau. I will convey that to the business office, I'll appreciate it.
Yeah, you know, we mention this every year, and I think that anyone who listens to Mr. Grau speak has to know that, Charlie, you're quite an experienced beer yourself, so a compliment coming from you is even more of a compliment based upon your local experience. The other thing that we talk about each year is the fact that a few years ago, four or five years ago, before Jim came in, our business office, as you will attest to, was in a very different situation. So over the years, the booklets keep on getting smaller as the recommendations do, and to come to an audit like this is quite spectacular, so thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. Thank you, Grau.
Thank you, Grau.
Thank you.
Okay, committee reports? Charlie? Facilities and budgets?
We met on the 13th, and actually between Dr. Vittie's reports and Mr. Tevis's reports, they always set up all my attendance. Mr. Hay was part of that also. We received copies of it. Nothing outstanding, with fiscal shape as the order wanted out. And I think we'll be having a meeting, Jim, do we need a meeting for Christmas or for the holidays? You know, knocking on budgets, so that will be probably a meeting for January.
That's correct.
And every effort being made, I think according to your budget timetable, by the end of January.
Yes, sir, that's a target.
I was reading somewhere, on one of the New Jersey clips, that there's a potential of the deadline being postponed by X number of weeks, whatever X number of weeks is, since we're not voting on the budget. It'll give you guys some breathing room in the central office, another couple weeks, and it seems like a lot, but until you're doing the job, two, three weeks is a lot of time. So hopefully, if we get, if that ever passes. The other part of that bill was that the filing deadline for the elections, it used to be the primary date, which is in June. And as proposed legislation sailed through the Senate, postponing until, I think, 64 days prior to the election, or 61 days, whatever it is, which I think was a goal of the New Jersey School Board also.
Like the first one day in July or something.
Yeah, so that's a possibility for next year. And I'm sure the administration people are aware of any changes that may occur.
Thank you, Charlie. Any questions? SATC?
We're meeting scheduled for Thursday.
Mike's not here tonight.
Okay, we basically went over a bunch of mandated policies with our group, and really not much more to report than that. It'll probably be in your package for the next meeting.
For first reading?
Right.
Okay, thanks. Any delegate liaison reports? Any ETC reports? Okay, I'll open it up to the public. Some items on the agenda. Say your name, Chris. Okay, see none? Take a motion for items shaped through O.
I'll move.
Any questions on Jim? N, L, N and L? Go call, please.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Cooney? Mr. Morello?
Yes.
Ms. Novy?
Yes.
Mrs. Richel?
Yes.
Dr. Kane?
Yes.
Dr. Corleone?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Thank you. Any other business or additional reports? I have under General Board a resolution from the Berkeley Township that I sent along with the board by email. I was wondering if anyone was interested in passing a similar resolution, or at least endorsing a Berkeley Township resolution at our next meeting? Their, I'll explain it. The resolution speaks to the Berkeley Township School District requesting the State of New Jersey Fund, or requesting full compensation for expenses that revolve around the Teach New Jersey. So for example, for increased minimum observations of teachers, certain types of training, in their case Marzano training, I guess in our case, Murphy-Danielson, tracking and supplies. This is a small school district, I guess in South Jersey. They have four elementary schools. Their business administrator calculated that Teach New Jersey will cost them an additional $206,000 annually on that mandate, on that mandate alone. I can't imagine what it's costing us, but even if it was that amount, that would be substantial. So I would be inclined to support their resolution, endorse it, or whatever the right word would be, to send it off and let them know that we support them in their effort to acquire some funding for an unfunded mandate.
Would you, I mean, I'd all for supporting it as well, but if we were going to do our own resolution, would we want to include other unfunded mandates as well? Or do you want to do it?
Yeah, let's do this, and then I'll...
Because Mark is a big one, too, with all the technological equipment that we're going to do. I mean, you might want to add both of them instead of...
I think I might have mentioned that on, it's a little pet project of mine right now, to kind of develop a list of unfunded mandates with New Jersey school boards. And actually, it was a request by Assemblyman Jay Weber that we develop a list and try and attach some costs to unfunded mandates. He was very interested, so we'll work on that. Any else? Okay, I'll open it up. Yes?
Just a quick comment about the following board meeting. And I'll let you, you know, talk about the detail of that. But we're scheduled to have a presentation from our humanities research program, David Tubbs, where we begin to look at our humanities program with regard to some research components. So we're inviting them to come and do a presentation on what they've done since September, and the board and community will find that very interesting. And depending on how my next several meetings with our administrative council goes, and our council working with our teaching staff, we may do some sort of preliminary budget conversation as well at the next board meeting.
Do you want to mention, we're switching the date?
So the Board of Education is, will be switching the date of our next meeting from Tuesday, December 17th, to Monday, December 16th at 7:30. And that will, Mr. Tubbs will be able to accommodate that date?
I'm hoping, I think with this much leverage, it should be fine, so...
Great. We wouldn't want to miss that. So just a notice to the public that it will be December 16th, our next meeting, which is a Monday, instead of December 7th.
I bet the location, do you think we could get it here on the 16th, if possible?
That would be nice.
You guys check that out?
Yeah, sometimes it's tough to last until the court.
Yeah, we're always tough at moving schools, you know. So we might have it here, or a high school, or not here.
It'll be here or someplace else. I did attend on Sunday Joseph Meinike's evil court of honor, and that's always fun to attend, those kinds of events. Okay, I'll open it up to the public for any items that are not on the agenda.
Hi, Andrea Ora, St. Brent Track, can you just give us an idea of the budget process and when we can expect discussions to begin at the board level?
Jim, your calendar?
Well, I'll just, I'll let Jim give you more details, I guess, about the lens, but I hope that the process is similar to the past in that, as I'm working with our administrators and with their staff, to begin to bring to the board, I guess, potentially, we'll call it some philosophical direction, having to do initiatives with staffing, the direction we hope to proceed, and then ensure order, of course, translate that into dollars and cents, so the board can more realistically react to those ideas. So we may bring that first presentation as early as December 16th for just some preliminary conversation, depending on the work I can get done between now and then. And Jim, you want to elaborate any further?
Yeah, basically, I mean, budget presentation's going to start in the beginning of January, maybe as early as the next board meeting, and just continue... maybe as early as the next board meeting, and just continue right on through until submission to the county superintendent, which right now is acquired by March 4th. It's a possibility, as Mr. Grau alluded to, that there's a statutory change to maybe back that up by a few weeks, but right now we're working off March 4th.
Didn't you give out a budget calendar a month or two ago?
Yes, I did.
It's short, about highlights all this stuff.
It does, yes.
No, it was really for the Board. I handed that out to the Board at this point. Is there something that maybe you'd like to add to it?
I think that came to Dr. Green, however he wants to handle that part of the budget process. I think that's the superintendent.
Yeah, I think, you know, realistically, probably it's particularly once January comes, there's probably going to be some budget conversation every board meeting at that point going forward. And as I said, it could be as soon as December 16th for at least some conceptual conversation to start happening.
Anyone else?
My name is Barbara Ames. I don't actually live in town, although I have a number of, heard the friends in my village, it's a very nice town. I was a member of a Board of Education in Ann Arbor Township for nine years, a while ago, so I've done your job, I've sat on that side of the table. I was very active in legislation. I was president of the County School Board Association at one time also. So a little bit experienced in what you folks deal with. I'm kind of here as a private citizen tonight. A number of people around the state of New Jersey and around the nation, in fact, are very concerned about a topic which I know you're aware of, and that's Common Core. And I, and I heard you refer to the concern about the part testing which is going on. Mr. Rouse serves on the Board of Education as a businessman, not on course, sorry, but as the business administrator. So he's heard this, my little spiel, and I'll be brief, I was there a couple of weeks ago, but...
We briefed a couple weeks ago.
Well, it's a big topic, but I just want to, I just want to ask you whether you are aware, and I know you're aware, because I'm sure you're hearing stuff about it, you obviously are, but whether you're aware of some of the concerns. Last night in East Hana, where there was a meeting with a speaker, and 80 folks turned out to hear some of our concerns about Common Core. It's a position that's been passed opposing Common Core from five freeholder boards in New Jersey over the past several months, including Morris County. Your senator, used to be my senator, but isn't right now, Joe Canaccio, and 11 other Republican senators wrote a letter on the 19th of November to the Commissioner Surf, Commissioner of Education, asking for some, for further information about Common Core, how it's been implemented. There are, there are some growing concerns about it, and it's about, about the cost of the testing, it's about lowering of educational standards, it's about the data mining that's going on, a lot of great concerns about it. So I have a little bit of information to leave you, and someplace that you could get in touch with me if you'd like, but if you've been listening to stuff around the country, New York State is just a little bit ahead of us in implementation, and they've had meetings in New York where hundreds of people have shown up, the parents have shown up, because when they did the testing there last year, last night, I heard 31% of the kids passed. We don't believe they suddenly became dumb from one year to the next, it has to do with the testing. But it's gotten the attention of people in New York State because they're ahead of us in the implementation. There are also, there's also a bill, two, I believe exactly, in Trenton to oppose Common Core, to create a study committee and to postpone the implementation of it for a year. And I have to test that this year. That's actually sponsored by a Democrat. So it's really interesting that it's not a partisan issue, and Bergen County, for example, which is apparently four Democrats and three Republicans, passed it unanimously a couple of months back. So it's not a politically partisan issue, but there are a lot of concerns about it. So are, you know, do, I don't know what, you know, I'm sure you're aware, but I guess I would ask whether you are, are understanding any of the concerns that have been expressed in public across the country, or elsewhere?
Well, I mean, I'll comment, our Board is very well read, and I know Karen Corleone chairs the Morris County School Boards Association and makes sure that our Board is well read. So they do see the literature and the rhetoric about the Common Core.
Right.
Certainly, as a administrator...
Are you concerned about some of the math, you know, some of the experts on the committee did not even sign off on the math and language arts standards that are being implemented this year. You're perhaps aware of that, Dr. Milgram and Dr. Stotsky did not even sign off on, on their standards in the math and language arts. And that's kind of, that's, it's an example of some of the concerns in education, that this is not going to improve education, but it's leveling down the education in some of our best districts across the state. So without taking any more of your time, I'll leave you just a little bit of this information. It's just one of the many pieces of information out there. You can also go to stopcommentcore.com, that's pretty easy to remember. And there is an excellent 30-minute video on there, which actually comes out of the state of Georgia, rather, sorry, about Common Core. There's more than enough information out there, which you're probably already aware of. So if that's good, just leave this with you, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming by.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Okay, motion to adjourn?
So.
Jackie?
Second.
Matt?